Marvin, you ready to kick us off?
I am ready. Hello and welcome to the School Board Candidate Forum for Van Buren Public Schools today. We are sponsored or working with the Western Wayne County NAACP, that would be me, Michigan Education Justice Coalition, and the Student Advocacy Center of Michigan. Well, our welcome and purpose, we will have some intros, then we'll talk about our shared values. We will present our statewide education justice platform. We'll ask school board candidates some questions related to our platform as well. I do want to start with the disclaimer that this is a C3 nonpartisan event. It is not an endorsement of any candidate.
And I think I'm going to do a couple of slides here. Hi, everybody. My name is Perry Stone Palmtwist. I'm the Executive Director of the Student Advocacy Center. First, I just want to give a shout out to our Michigan Education Justice Coalition. It's a statewide coalition of organizations fighting for education justice. It includes parents, students, community members, and educators. We believe that every student in Michigan deserves healthy and healing public schools. They are helping co-sponsor these types of forums all around the state, and we are a proud member of MEJC. Student Advocacy Center believes education is a right, and every child is worthy of a quality education. We have our headquarters in Ypsilanti, and we have offices in Detroit and Jackson. We have a statewide Student Rights Helpline where families from all over call us with challenges such as expulsions, special education issues, and other barriers. We do work in the Van Buren Public Schools, providing one-on-one advocacy for students who are struggling. Before this was starting, we were just talking about a couple of cases that we have in the school district, so it is a place that we do quite a bit of work.
And as a Western Wayne County NAACP representative, I am so glad to be here. Western Wayne County, our branch includes the area of Belleville and others where Van Buren is located. We are steeped in civil rights. We've been here since 1909 and in this community since 1975. I'm sorry, we've been serving this community for the last 75 years. Our mission is to achieve equity, political rights, and social inclusion by advancing politics and practices that expand human and civil rights, eliminate discrimination, and accelerate the well-being, education, and economic security of all persons of color. Why do school board elections matter? School board, they make decisions about the budget, school discipline, strategic direction, and so much more. They also hire and evaluate the superintendent. So what's at stake in public schools with this election? Students most impacted by the pandemic continue to struggle with academics and social, social-emotional needs. Despite these soaring needs, our schools have with just too few people and financial resources to respond to all of their needs. Families most impacted by inequities are far too often not a part of district decision-making. We'd like to see all of those things addressed. We also have, there's a growing threats around the state and country of the defunding and privatization of public schools by capitalizing on hot-button issues such as race and sexuality. And in Michigan, there are long-term inequities that require full funding so that schools get the resources needed for all students, no matter what their zip code is. We are also dealing with...
This is my slide, this is my slide. We wanted to share with you MEJC's Healthy and Healing Public Schools platform. In 2020, SAC and many of the other organizations involved did listening sessions with families and educators and really listened to what, you know, dreaming about what they want their schools to look like, what they want public education to look like, and this platform was developed out of those conversations. And so I just want to share a few of those with you. Our schools must be equitably and fully funded. Public schools must prioritize and invest in mental health. Curriculum needs to be rooted in the principles of anti-racism, anti-oppression, and trauma-informed practices. Public schools must create structures to bring in student, parent, and caregiver voice and leadership, and public school budgets need to reflect our values and needs.
So how many seats are open in Van Buren Public Schools? Well, we have three positions that are full-term and two that are not a full-term, so that's a total of five running. And then the next steps in all of this is we've got to make sure that we get out and vote. Everybody support and talk about voting. The early voting has already begun, began September 26. You can register and vote at the same time. You can find your local clerk's office, and then we've got, we've got the link right here in the, and we'll drop that in the chat also, I'm sure. And then if not, then we still have Election Day on November the 8th, so please get out there and vote. Also, you can become an education justice voter. So there's a QR code right on your screen. You can shoot it with your, with your phone, your smartphone. Scan this QR code and pledge to vote for education justice. We need you. And if you would like to learn a little bit more, all school board candidates in the state were invited to fill out a survey. You can click on the link also, and that'll give you some more information, more details.
I could talk about this one. Next, October 27th, which I think is Thursday. Now I'm looking at my calendar, yeah, Thursday, there is going to be a forum in the evening where folks can hear from the candidates that are running for governor, as well as state school board, and the questions will be related to education. So please be sure to register for that and to share that out with anyone you can, and encourage them to come out, and I'm sure it's going to be recorded as well.
So yes, and not, not just you, we'd like for you to also encourage others to vote, get out and vote. As I'm listening to the radio nowadays, it's a lot of advertising for that. Everything I see on TV, we've got a lot going on, got to speak it into existence, make it a part of our practice. You can register for a training session at this link that's listed below. We'll add that in the chat as well. Help us to motivate your family and friends to vote all around, and let's, let's really work on our education justice issues. So what's expected for tonight? We have several guests who will ask questions. We have several questions to go with that. Candidates will have two minutes to respond. Our facilitator will share the order of each question. Then we will have several rapid-fire yes or no types of questions, and then we will end with questions from the audience. Perry, am I to add a little bit more right here?
No, we can move into the questions, but let's just take a look at who's with us from the candidates, because I know it sounded like one person couldn't join us. Or one person's sick, so it looks like we have Darlene and Terrance are here. So those will be, I guess, will just be those two answering the question.
And I think that'll be the order. I like the order that you just organically created. That works for me.
Well, we should switch off, we should switch off.
You think we'd switch off? Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, are you good? I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn my video off if you're good. I think you're asking the first question.
Okay. Right, all right, so the first question is going to go to Darlene. And I'd like for you to introduce yourself and tell us what experiences you have that will make you an effective board member. Would also like for you to tell us what stands out to you from the platform to build healing and healthy schools in Michigan.
I should have wrote all that down. I thought it was a quick introduction. I'm Darlene Lawyer Garrick. I have essentially been a resident of the Belleville area, the tri-community, my entire life, except for college and a small stint in Colorado. I'm a resident, I'm a graduate, I'm a parent of a Van Buren student, along with being on the board for a term and a half. I, my day job is University of Michigan facilities, so I like to feel that I bring the facilities work with me to school board to make decisions about building enhancements and different aspects that other people on the board don't have. And what was then, what did I leave out?
What stands out to you from the platform to build healing and healthy schools in Michigan?
You know, one of the things I saw in the slides, and I've long have been keeping up on is, is just the, the equity needed in, in funding to help us get where we need to be. I, I don't feel that throwing money at situations fixes it, but there are some things that without the proper funding, you just can't do.
Thank you for that. So I'm gonna ask Terrence the first question. I'll break it up for you, make it a little bit easier for you. So it's the same thing. I just want you to introduce yourself and tell us what experiences you have that will make you an effective board member.
Okay, my name is Terrence Goff. I am a resident of Van Buren Township. I'm a father of three daughters who also attend Van Buren schools. I was previously on a board for four years in our previous district. So I bring that experience, and we were very successful with that school. It was a charter school. We opened, and that school thrived. And I bring that experience. Professionally, I'm a building inspector for the city of Detroit. So like the other candidate stated, I bring building and construction professionalism and understanding of budgets and, and what's needed as far as the modification of schools and things like that. I bring that to the table.
And what stands out to you from the platform to build healthy and healthy schools in Michigan?
I think it starts actually from the boards. I think that there needs to be a diversity of thought within the board system, and a lot of boards aren't diverse. A lot of boards don't have diversity of thought. There, there, there are people with the same age, people with the same sort of thought, same sort of backgrounds. And I think that if there's a diversity in backgrounds, there's more understanding, because you get a chance to learn people, understand people, and see other points of view. So I think the healing in schools is going to start from the roots, which is the board itself.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to pass it on to Christine Hickman for the next series of questions. Perry said that we will switch the, the order, so Darlene started the first one, so I guess Terrence can start this one.
All right, hi, Terrence. Thanks for joining today. So, what are the steps you'll take to include engaged parents, caregivers, and students in the district issues such as the budget and equity plan? And can, then can you specifically address caregivers and students most impacted by inequities?
First, I don't personally think that parents know that they're able to come to board meetings. So I would first start by getting the information out, letting the parents know that, hey, these are open meetings. There's an Open Meetings Act that's out there. So these meetings aren't in secret, there's no clandestine agenda, anything like that, that you can come to these meetings. As far as the people who are impacted, those people are, in particular, needs to be reached out to, to let them know, like, hey, listen, this is available to you. And I think that every school, your question was, give me your question again? The last part of your question, I'm sorry.
So the last part of the question is, can you specifically address caregivers and students most impacted by inequities?
That would be the people who don't get the information, I believe. People who don't get information, who don't seek out the information, or don't have the ability to get the information, they're unfairly impacted, because things just happen to them, because they have no voice. Those people need to be informed that they do have a voice, that there is, you, you do have say in your child's education. So the caregivers who don't come to meetings, who don't typically come to parent-teacher conferences, answer emails, they need to be reached out to in, in any way possible to let them know that they have a voice, because those are the people that get ran over, because they're not heard from. And we all know the squeaky wheel against the grease. And so if you don't, you know, voice what you're going through, people don't, it's out of sight, out of mind. That's what, that's why I want to, like I said, get into the board itself, so we have a little bit of diversity of thought. So people who may not think about things because it doesn't affect them, there may be another group that says, hey, listen, there's other people out here that go through these sort of things. Let's consider that, let's bring them to the table.
Christine, you're going to pass it on to Darlene?
Yep, I'm sorry, I was trying to unmute me. My granddaughter is upstairs, so it's a little bit loud here, and I do apologize, but it's my daughter's birthday, so. Darlene, again, thank you for, for coming. It is important that we get to ask you questions. We do appreciate it. And what are the steps you'll take to include and engage parents, caregivers, and students in district issues such as budget and equity, and equity plan? And then can you specifically address caregivers and students most impacted by inequities?
And so all our school board meetings are open. I know that I've seen communications in all the schools that my child has gone through in the last years, where in their announcements that they send out to parents, they post that there is a school board meeting, and the Times, we have it on our site. We would love more people to attend. Can pretty much name everybody who's in the audience on a typical meeting. Specifically to get that group there, I know at the high school, I was quite impressed with their presentation most recently, that they were looking at scores of students who were falling into that gap because of the pandemic and because of inequities. And they were sending messages, and if they weren't received, they were on the phone, and they were calling, and they were calling and calling until somebody picked up and said, hey, we've got this program, we want your child to stay after school so that we can help them and increase, you know, their, their opportunities. And they've had a great success rate with that, that by calling and not giving up, they've gotten people in there to work with.
All right, Darlene, thank you for that. I'm going to ask the next question. Introduce, I'm sorry. What is your opinion on teaching about the history of racism and the current push to start banning books in school? We'll start that with Darlene and then go to Terrence.
I'm sorry, could you? I, I was thinking you were going a different way with the question, and I was formulating in my head, and then I realized I wasn't looking at the right question. Could you repeat it, please?
Yes. What is your opinion on teaching about the history of racism? And also the current push to begin banning books in school?
Okay, I've never been a fan of banning books. Everybody has a different opinion on what they think is unacceptable and not acceptable. And by taking those books away, you're only putting one agenda out there or one, one thought process. So I'm not a huge fan of that, and I know some local districts have been doing it quite well. A friend of mine's a librarian in the school district, and she's been struggling a lot. I've always, you know, if, if you don't learn history, you repeat history, and I I think most kids don't pay as much attention to the history classes they get in school. I know that I probably didn't latch on to that as much as I should have. But I think that by giving them the, sharing with them what has happened and the consequences and the successes from specific things that they'll benefit.
Thank you. So Terrence, I'm going to ask the same question. What's your opinion on teaching about the history of racism and the current push to begin banning books in school?
I feel that the history of racism should absolutely be taught in school. There's only one way that we're going to heal as a nation, as people, is through empathy, and the only way you have empathy is through understanding. And the only way you have understanding is through being taught. So if you don't know the history of a culture, of people, of a person, you won't understand why they may behave the way they behave, say things that they say, or act the way they act, or anything like that. Therefore, you will only look at them from your lens. And if you don't look at them through another lens, or have any kind of understanding, you won't gain any empathy. Therefore, you won't, we can't heal, we can't grow as people. So learning the history of racism of this nation is paramount for us to grow as a nation. We have to acknowledge what has happened, why it happened, and the cause of it, and why we are the way we are right now. We can't sugarcoat it, we can't gloss it. It's part of history, and it happened, and it should be acknowledged, and we should go forward in healing, and we cannot go forward in healing if we don't first acknowledge what happened. You can't atone for, for anything that you don't admit existed. Okay, as far as on banning books, I, I don't feel that books should necessarily be banned. I think that the Van Buren schools have been very good about sending out emails, letting us know what books they're going to be reading in English class and things like that, and giving us an opportunity to preview the books, or, you know, do some kind of Google research, or if we have knowledge of the book already, but they've given us a heads up. I think that it's an opportunity for parents to talk to children. If there's something in the book or the subject matter is something that parents don't agree with. But understanding that these subject matters are part of life. At some point, your child is going to experience something possibly that are in these books. Therefore, at this time, you need to take advantage of this moment that it's in book form and it's not in real life. And address the child and be able to sit in a comfortable situation to address it versus being, you know, in a situation where it's thrown in your face and it's real life. So I do not agree with banning books at all. I think that it's an opportunity for conversation.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, good evening. My name is Andre, and here's the next question. I'm with Student Advocacy Center. This, we'll start with Terrence on this one. What should be your school's top spending priorities in its budget? And then to follow up with that, what should not be prioritized, or what should, what should be divested from in the budget? So what should be the first, the first, the school's top priorities in spending in the budget? And then what should be diverted, divested from in the budget?
I feel that the educators in our school system should be paid on par with their counterparts in other districts of this size. So I think the top priority should be bumping up the budget for teachers. Therefore, we have better teacher retention, and also we can attract a better quality of teacher, someone who wants to be there, and they're in there for the long haul. And as far as divestment, there are sports programs that get private funding and things like that, that maybe some of that funding can be diverted to teacher salaries or something like that. But I think probably, if I had to pick one, it probably would be sports programs that are going to survive by being divested somewhat. I'm not in favor of canceling any sports programs by any stretch of imagination. But if they can take a little hit in divestment, I would say those are the programs that should be pulled from, without canceling the program.
Thank you. And Darlene, the same question. What should be the school's top spending priorities in the budget? And then alternatively, what should be invested from in the, in the budget?
So I agree that teacher and support salaries are very important. I do know that about 90% of our budget does go for that. I would love to give them more, and there are other things that we have to spend on, building, maintenance, and whatnot. So I think a priority should be, we have been going into looking at a lot of grants, and we've got a lot of grants given to us in the last few years with COVID, and every grant we could apply for, we have done to get more monies to help all of that. So a priority would be investing in looking for more opportunities for funding to help supplement, but to also look for ways to reduce budgets by, we just redid Owen, and a lot of high-efficiency lighting and heating and cooling, so that the cost of running the schools can be lower and more money can be put where we'd like it to go. I see now that the questions are in the comments, so I'm just double-checking. So just spending, continuing to spend wisely, we have a good rating, and as long as, as well as teachers, but all the staff. I mean, it'll be easier on teachers if we had more bus drivers and more pair of pros and everything to help in every aspect of the school day, to make the kids less stressed, to make the parents less stressed, and to make it an area that's conducive to learning.
Thank you. How do you intend to protect students from abuse and discrimination? How do you intend to protect students from abuse and discrimination? Specifically those marginalized due to their sexual orientation, gender identity or expression, race and disability status?
Unfortunately, um, everything at this time is taken as a case by case basis. But doing policies throughout the schools and encouraging teachers and the staff to look out for these things and to be aware of these issues to try to combat them before they happen. Having more of the okay to speak lines so that students feel comfortable reporting issues and having them addressed and then making sure that all issues are addressed and not pushed away.
Thank you. Terrence, same question. How do you intend to protect students, uh, from abuse and discrimination, specifically those marginalized due to their sexual orientation, gender identity or expression, race and disability status?
Um, I feel that, um, the schools should set the tone from the beginning of the school year. Letting the whole student body understand and know that everyone is protected, that everyone has the freedom to be who they are and there's gonna be zero tolerance for that. I, I think that when a school sets that tone, that, that adds a sense of protection to, um, a child, especially a marginalized child or a child that has a, a sexual orientation that is not considered the norm or whatever the case may be. And I, I, I feel that once the school stamps out first and lets the student body know that, no bullying or anything like that is gonna be tolerated. When you set that tone, I think that would help a lot. Um, obviously there, there's gonna be situations because we're dealing with children. But I, I think that you have to set that tone and you have to step out and get in front of a situation, not wait till it happens. Was there a second part to that question, sir?
That was it, thank you. Christine?
Okay, am I asking Terrence first?
Yes, I believe it's on me.
Um, what steps will you take to reduce suspensions, expulsions and disciplinary placements into virtual schools? In the district?
Oh, can you repeat the last part again?
Yeah, um, what, um, what, what's your take um, about the suspensions, expulsions and then, um, you know, the kids are put into virtual school while they're in suspensions and expulsions? So what steps will you take to help keep our kids in school versus putting them out into a virtual school so that they can, you know, still get their social skills and everything like that that they need to be in school instead of, you know, kicking them out and putting them, having them do a virtual school?
Uh, once again, I, I think you have to set the tone as a faculty to let the students know that, um, you're not gonna get a vacation, that acting out is not gonna get you away from school because sometimes that's what they want. They wanna be out of school, they wanna be away from school for whatever reason. So at the beginning, you need to let them know that your discipline is gonna be dealt with on a school level. And, and that the option of going straight to virtual school is on a case by case va- basis. And let them know that it's not just gonna be the automatic option. That, um, you know, if you're gonna act out, you may, you know, be expelled, something like that. There has to be a, a thought of a major consequence to have the children kind of conform to to, to what we need them to do as far as being good citizens in school. So I think that letting them know that, you know, you're gonna act right and you're gonna act right in school i- is going to kind of curtail, you know, the expulsion and sending people to virtual schools.
And then Darlene, um, what steps will you take to reduce the suspensions, expulsions and disciplinary placements into virtual schools into the, in the district?
So this goes with the, the previous question that addressing issues early and making sure kids have someone to talk to so issues can be addressed quickly. And having them have a safe space where they can feel comfortable, um, before issues arrive. Unfortunately, everything has to be handled by a case by case basis and some issues that require because of the students' actions, um, to keep everyone safe. We've recently had some issues that expulsion was the only option because we can't jeopardize the other students. You know, I, I, I would love to keep all students there, but we have to think of all, uh, the other students as well. And the students who are willing to follow the rules and work with, um, getting help and um, maintaining the policies set by the school and the, the standards and the, the safety of the school.
And then, um, Darlene, students with disabilities lost most during the pandemic. One new step should the district take to support these students?
So again, I, um, I know the high school and some of the other schools that have already presented have been discussing things that they've been doing with that where they're really focusing on the students who are most at risk right now, whether they had a disability or not, the students that are in that low scale and reaching out to them and doing extra programs. Um, the high school has some tutoring programs going on and some mentoring programs. Um, they're also having, uh, community members come in and also help tutor and assist students, um, to get them back on track. And I know that the other schools are doing similar things. Teachers are watching, um, and meeting weekly regarding students and and pulling kids out who need extra interventions. We've, with grants, hired more interventionalists, so we've been able to pull out more students. And, you know, it's continuing those efforts and coming up with new ideals as well, trying as many things as we can.
Thank you. And then, um, Terrence, student with dis- students with disabilities lost most during, um, the pandemic. One new step should the district take to support these students?
Okay, I happen to know for a fact that, um, the district has done everything that the, um, Darlene just said, and I applaud that. Um, I, I'm all for meeting things head on and the district has done that. And the fact that they're seeking more dollars and more programming to, to help these marginalized kids and the kids who fell behind during a pandemic and the disabled kids who fell behind during a pandemic is paramount. It's wonderful. It's great that they're doing that. And I just think that, um, like Darlene said, I have to agree with her that more programming i- is and finding out more resources that are available to help these children is great. And I just applaud the district because they recognize that this is an issue and they're going headfirst and they're, they're dealing with it. And that's the only way you're, you're going to change anything is to deal with it. So with that, I'm in total agreement with what the district is doing at this time.
Okay, the next question, uh, we'll start with you, Terrence. The presence of police in schools has escalated dramatically in the last several decades. Research, research has shown that students of color are disproportionately surveilled, referred for arrest and then treated more harshly by the criminal legal system. What approach should the district take to law enforcement in schools?
Uh, that's a very hot button topic. School safety is right now on everybody's mind, as it should be. It, it's we're, we're, we're in a, a time right now that we've never experienced before as a nation. Having police presence in a school is necessary. But I think that the faculty and the police need to have an understanding on the, the roles of the police while they're in a building if they're not doing or affecting specific police business. And the, the role of the police is not to profile, um, African American or, or of children of color or anything like that. It is to add a layer of safety to the school in general, to faculty, to the students as a whole, not to, um, you know, profile. And it goes back to what I'm saying about having an understanding and having empathy. If you understand the history of, of African American and, and people of color in a police department, you, you would know to let the police know what you expect from them. And if you don't, uh, the police are gonna do what they do. And I'm not saying that all police are going to profile them. But you need to set the tone, what the expectation is for their presence, you know, like I said, outside of them doing their actual police duties, they know what they need to do when they're doing that. But their presence in general should be explained and what's expected of them. And that should be to provide a layer of safety to everyone and not to surveil or to profile any particular group because they're a particular group. And, and I think that that needs to be made clear to, um, any, um, officer that's going to be inside of a school building.
Thank you. Darlene, same question. The presence of police in schools has escalated dramatically in the last several decades. Research has shown that students of color are disproportionately surveilled, referred for arrest and then treated more harshly by the criminal legal system. What approach should the district take to law enforcement in schools?
So we currently have a resource officer, um, and we're looking at a grant to get a, a second officer. And both would be shared between all the schools, not just the high school. I've always liked the concept of the resource officer in the school, not as someone who's an officer walking around throwing their authority, but as someone who is helping the students know that they're, that they're not the bad guys. They're there to help them if they need to talk about something, if there's issues, that they're there to help keep them safe. A friend of mine was a resource officer in a school in Chicago. And the bonds she made with those kids and the, the program she helped institute in her system, her school was amazing. And I would love to see some of that where there's more interaction with the resource officer and students and maybe even the, the districts. The entire, you know, police department. I even, something was said once to have, um, a basketball game, you know, the high school versus the police department, just to kind of get that, that friendly feeling. But also that they're there to help, to scare and keep everyone safe.
Thank you. And then now we'll move into Marvin, this is the speed round?
Yes, the speed round. I'm so excited to, uh, be a part of this next level uh, of a forum. So I'm going to, uh, give a, a little brief, uh, piece and then there'll be followed with a question. Darlene, you'll have one minute to respond. And then Terrence, you'll have one minute to respond. And so, uh, here we go. I don't know if you all are, you both wanna be, uh, on camera at the same time and, and be ready to respond, uh, cause this is a little bit, uh, quicker pace than the last bit. So data transparency for school discipline is a key step in accountability. You can't address a problem you aren't measuring. Will you commit to publicly reviewing discipline data on a regular basis?
Either of us or is it me first?
Darling, you're first.
Okay, sorry. Um, yes, as long as, um, student confidentially is kept.
Terrence, she, she, yeah, she got that out really quickly.
Um, yeah, yes, I agree. As long as, um, the students' identities are not compromised, uh, totally yes, absolutely.
Right. Uh, all around the state, we see students who are homeless, disciplined at higher rates. In Van Buren, students who have, uh, ever experienced homelessness are disciplined at nearly twice the rate as all students. Twenty-five percent versus fourteen percent. Let's see, so Terrence, you'll go first on this one. Will you commit to advocating that Van Buren change its discipline process and require seven factor consideration to add an eighth factor requiring consideration of the child's housing status and work on developing discipline processes that involve the homeless liaison?
Absolutely. You need to know, um, the source of the, the child's, um, acting out. And, and being homeless is a pretty good reason for a child to not behave or conform to the, to the measures in which we think are normal. So yes, I do agree with that.
Darling?
I agree with that. The, I, I know that a lot of the decisions on, um, the factors and the steps that they take are based on laws that are in, in place. And as long as the offenses don't interfere with any of the other laws, um, regarding like a gun is an automatic, um, type thing. There are certain things that would still have to be followed, but yes.
Okay, so Dar- uh, let's see, so who else? Uh, so Darling, you'll be first.
Right, yeah, I'm first this time.
Uh, increasingly, more Michigan students are being forced to attend virtual school for disciplinary reasons. But they are not afforded due process rights outlined in the Supreme Court's Goss versus Lopez decision. Darlene, will you commit to advocating for basic due process rights for students facing disciplinary placement to virtual school, including the right to a due process meeting?
Yes, I, I, I know that, um, when a student is suspended or expelled, there is meetings that are had. And there are the virtual option seems to be the easiest at this point because they're so abundant right now. But there were other schools that they could go to in person that are more fit for issues um, that used to be put, they would go to pri- previously.
Terrence, would you like me to restate the question?
Yes, would you please?
Will you commit to advocating for basic due process rights for students facing disciplinary placement to virtual school, including the right to a due process meeting?
Absolutely. Everyone deserves due process and any type of situation where punishment is going to be, um, dismissed. Or excuse me, uh, dished out. So I absolutely would, um, advocate for that, yes.
All right, so Terrence, so you're, you're first on this next one. And, uh, then, then you, darling. Uh, do you commit to working towards the school budget in the next two years that provides for two hundred and fifty students to one counselor?
Yes, I think the fewer number of students to a counselor is always better. And yes, I will commit to, to working for that because the counselors need to know the students and need to know, you know, that they have time to work with these students and, and the counselors are overwhelmed when they have greater, greater numbers. So yes. So yes, I would agree to that.
And Darlene?
I have to agree with that. Um, I was trying to do in math in my head of how many students we have to a counselor right now. About seventeen hundred students and believe there's seven, maybe eight counselors at the high school. And I know that we also have now a, a counselor that is, um, college focused to help with the areas that are, are so lost, um, in making those decisions. So yes, I think it'd be great to have more counselors. Um, I know that it would have greatly advantaged my child to be able to get in quicker and easier.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, Darlene, uh, will you commit to hosting a town hall with parents and caregivers to share information about the school's budget and get feedback?
We have a budget presentation every year, um, and everyone's welcome. It's announced and everyone's welcome to give um, feedback and, but yeah, the opening up more as a town hall wouldn't be an issue.
Terrence?
Um, yes, I absolutely would. Um, I think that opening up the budget to parents is a form of transparency that, um, puts people at ease. So I would definitely be willing to host a town hall if that was necessary.
All right, Terrence, you'll start this next one. Uh, will you commit to eliminating expulsions of elementary students and dramatically reducing, uh, removals of, of, uh, all students?
Um, yes, um, obviously, um, it's a case by case basis and as long as the violation does not pose a threat to the school or to the student themselves or to the faculty. I- if it can be worked out where the student can be in school, we should keep the child in school. But once again, you know, if a law is broken or there is a safety issue where faculty or students are endangered and obviously, um, other steps have to be taken because there, there, there are certain aspects of zero tolerance that are necessary in the school setting, which leads to expulsion. But, uh, as far as reducing expulsion, yes, with those meetings that we talked about, um, I believe that, um, we can work it out with the due process meetings and, and speaking with parents and the students. Yes.
Darlene?
Yes, um, the same with absentee rates. It, you can't learn if you're not in school. So anytime you can eliminate reasons for them not to be in school, but Terrence said due process. And the first thing that came to mind when I saw elementary is you think that issues happen at the high school level, but my kindergartner, um, sat next to her kid one day on the bus from the middle school who brought a knife to school to show off to his friends. And there are just some infractions that would warrant. And it's a case by case basis and we have to keep everybody safe.
Okay, Darlene? Do you commit to voting on a school board resolution to oppose school vouchers that let Michigan kids, that let MI kids learn voucher scheme?
Sorry, I'm rereading it. My, and the thing.
Yeah.
I've never been a big component of the school vouchers. I I think it will harm the public schools in the end. But I, uh, I, I would have to say I would oppose, uh, a resolution. I would support a resolution that opposes the school vouchers.
Terrence, same question.
Could you repeat the question for me, please?
Voting on the school board resolution to oppose school vouchers and the let MI kids learn voucher scheme.
Oh, yes, I am opposed to the school vouchers. So yes, I would vote, um, no on the resolution to, um, well, we'll vote to not have school vouchers. I hope that's clear to you.
The wording is a little.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, it is. I agree. All right. So now we do have some time for public commentary and questions. I didn't see any in the chat. Anel, did, did I miss any of the, uh, the questions?
Uh, I have not seen any in the chat just yet.
I know Ms. Vandenberg had a question.
Andrea, do you have a question?
Um, I, I have another question for them.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, so, um, I live in the community of Belleville Schools, um. And one of the major issues with our, uh, us parents, because I'm, I'm a parent also of the kids, um, is that, as Karen said, our voice is lost. Um, and there's a lot of policies and procedures and things that, you know, we just, we do not know about. And sometimes we know about them too late. How are you going to handle situations, um, that you have frustrated parents and children that they don't feel like they're being listened to? Um, because being listened to right now is, um, i- i- it's, it's hard and a lot of people are giving up because they don't feel heard. What is it that you could do to make it where you, the parents, along with these struggling children are able to be heard when they're having issues before punishments are, are given out?
Um, should I start?
Yeah, Terrence, I'm sorry.
Oh, no problem. So, one of the reasons I'm running for school board i- is because, you know, for lack of a better term, culturally, I've grown up in a culture that has not been heard. That feels that they've been marginalized, that feels that, um, information is not always been readily available. And that's one of the reasons why I want to fight for people who are marginalized and why I want to be on a school board, because I know how that feels. So now I'm sort of in a position where I know how to seek out information. Um, you know, I'm married and my wife is gainfully employed. I'm gainfully employed. So I, I can do certain things, but not everybody can. And someone has to advocate for those who can't. And that's what I mean when I say that certain groups and, 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 and this isn't, doesn't have anything to do with race, but certain groups in general don't think about things that don't affect them, be it a race, be it financial, be it educationally or whatever the case may be. If they're in a certain group, they don't consider things that don't affect them. And I understand marginalized people because I come from a culture that's been marginalized. So that's one of the reasons why I want to be on a school board. And I would fight to have people get information. I would fight for them to be informed. I would fight for these rules and processes to be made clear so people can't be excluded. Or they, they, they have the ability to obtain the information or things like that. And that's one of the main reasons why I want to participate in the school board. Because education is for everyone. It's not for certain people. It's not for the haves and have. It's not just for the haves. It's for everyone. And I think that the gap needs to be closed. And I, I, I'm very passionate about that. So I would work hard on that because like I said, I come from a culture that's been marginalized and that, and that's to this day kind of still marginalized, you know, if we're being honest. So I, I want to fight for everyone.
Thank you.
So one thing, when, when people come to the board, normally, it's kind of blindsiding. Because the issue that they're coming to was not aware about prior to and not aware whether or not the channels have gone through. And the board doesn't, we, we have a board president that we elect and that is the speaker. And we don't normally speak out at a, a board meeting to directly address things just because we're not the speaker, the president is. I think that I would encourage a process, maybe even more widely known, but just the, the hierarchy to go to the teacher, the principal, the superintendent. And then if you are coming to the board, having a background sent to us so that we do have some idea what's going on and are able to address it or find out more information about it from the parties concerned on the other side before it's there in front of us where we, we only have one side. So working on a process that allows that communication to come to us and allows us to give back some feedback and find out more about it.
Thank you.
Andrea, did you have a question you wanted to ask?
Yes. Um, I wondered why Mr. Goff hasn't come to any meetings.
Uh, what meetings are you referring to now?
The school board meetings. I haven't seen you at any since you've been running.
Um, my schedule right now does not afford me to be at any meetings. I would have to actually rearrange my schedule permanently to be able to do that. That's why I haven't been at any meetings right now.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Now I'll just follow up to that. Um, Terrence, have you tuned into the school board meetings, not being able to go to them?
Yes, I receive a board packet, um, every Monday that they have a meeting. I receive an email board packet from the, um, board, I mean, it's from the superintendent's secretary. So once a month on a Monday, I receive a board packet and I review the board packet.
Twice a month?
Twice a month, excuse me.
Do we have any other questions from the audience? Not hearing any. Um, I want to thank everyone so much for, for coming out. Um, Terrence and Darlene, I think it's great. I wish, um, the rest of your fellow candidates could have made it out tonight. Um, but we definitely encourage folks to go to the Michigan Education Justice Coalition website to learn more about candidates. They were invited to fill out that survey. Um, certainly encourage people to vote. Andre, anything you want to add before we wrap up? Or Marvin?
Let's see, for me, I just want to thank again also, uh, Terrence and Darlene for coming out. Um, as you know, it's very important, uh, to tell the public and let them know who you are and what you stand for. Um, because a school board, um, makes so many, you know, important decisions. And, you know, the, the schools are the backbone of every community. And so, you know, we put on this forum to, to make and have everyone, uh, make an informed decision uh, when it comes time to vote. So thank you for your time for being here. I really appreciate it. We appreciate it.
Thank you. I, I appreciate, um, the lack of uh, giving opportunities to speak without having to go door to door because I really don't want to interrupt anybody's family time. I don't think anybody gets enough of that anymore.
Yeah, I too want to echo the sentiments of Perry and Andre. Thank you for, uh, taking some time out to, uh, answer some challenging questions. Uh, the work of a school board is, uh, it's, it's deep. And, uh, it's rich and lives are at stake. And so, uh, these, uh, these, uh, the decisions that you all are doing are, it's a lot more, more than just, uh, curriculum and, uh, you know, what's on the lunch menu. And so, uh, with that being said, we really do appreciate, uh, the hard work and efforts that you are, um, if you are, uh, voted in, are committing yourselves to. This is a, a, a really, really, it's an honor to be on the school board, but it's also, it's real work. So, uh, thank you for, uh, your time and your presence and your thoughts. And, uh, we're looking forward to some great things.
Yeah, and I think I'll just add, um, Michigan Education Justice Coalition has been doing a lot of work to support progressive school board members. Um, sometimes it can feel lonely and so they do a lot of trainings and support for candidates, um, for school board members all around the state. Um, so want to lift that up and, um, just thank you. It is a lot of work. I think school boards in the last two years have gotten a lot of criticism and not a lot of thanks for all the time, um, the hours and hours spent. So, um, thank you for your, um, being willing to be out there and, and, and be a public servant. So we thank you. I'm going to stop our Facebook Live and we'll be, um, posting this, uh, on our YouTube channel and, and all the good stuff, but we just, uh, are very grateful, um, for everyone.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to speak.